Um hello and welcome to the District Two Candidate Forum hosted by Fremont for Everyone. We're really glad that all of the candidates were able to make it tonight. And can tell us about their positions on housing and homeless issues, which are impacting our community quite. Quite a lot right now. So just to give everyone the rundown of how tonight exactly is going to go. Uh first, we're going to introduce Fremont for everyone and explain our mission. Then we'll hear opening statements from the candidates. Followed by a series of questions on housing and homelessness related topics. Between thirty-five and forty-five minutes after the top of the hour will switch from. Uh we'll switch to audience submitted questions. We've had a few so far, though, uh a bit later I'll go over how anyone in attendance tonight. Can submit a question, should they, should they want to submit a question? Then we'll he, then we'll have a closing statements from all of our candidates. So first, a little bit about the organization, I'm just gonna read this off of my other screen. So I apologize if I'm not, not looking directly at all y'all for a little bit. Um so Fremont for Everyone advocates for inclusive affordable housing for our residents. And ensures Fremont is a welcoming, is welcoming of new neighbors while remaining a wonderful community for living closer to work. Raising a family and aging in place, a home for everyone. Fremont for Everyone began in the summer of twenty eighteen as Friends of the Housing Navigation Center. And supporting the approval and eventual realization of a Housing Navigation Center in Fremont. Despite intense public opposition. Since then, Fremont for Everyone has forged a partnership with California Gimby. And tackling the broader issue of housing equity and affordability. In August of twenty twenty-one, Fremont for Everyone adopted a formal set of bylaws and governance procedures. And conducted our first leadership elections. What began as a loose, loose coalition of homeless, homeless advocates. Has now evolved into a structured, well-organized advocacy group with growing legitimacy and influence. Our focus, however, has remained consistent as we continue to focus on the following. Uh general target areas of interest. Local advocacy focused on the unhoused, local advocacy focused on general housing policy. Statewide advocacy focused on general housing policy, public education on housing issues, and direct volunteer opportunities. So now that you know a little bit about Fremont for Everyone, we're going to hear from each of our candidates. Each candidate will get ninety seconds for each time they speak. Um opening statement, closing statement, and answering um all of the questions. The questions will all be directed at all candidates in turn, so each candidate will have an opportunity to answer every question. Again, uh between thirty-five and forty-five minutes past the top of the hour, we'll switch to audience questions. So far, we have four audience submitted questions. And if a um member of the audience wants to submit a question, they should submit it. And I'm gonna go with in the Q and A box. Um you, you can submit a question, I believe, either anonymously or have your name attached to it. Uh either as fine and need no type of question. Um anonymous or your name attached will be preferred. We do ask that if you submit a question, it be phrased in such a way that it can be. Directed at all candidates, that it be focused on issues of housing or homelessness. And it not be hateful, discriminatory, rude, or violent in, in nature. So um we also uh ask that when candidates answer questions that you focus on what you have done. Uh what you want to do if elected, not necessarily what your opponent has done or failed to do. So if a candidate directly criticizes another candidate, the target, targeted candidate or candidates in this case will have thirty seconds for rebuttal if requested. If the rebutting candidate re-criticizes the first candidate, then the first candidate will have thirty seconds for a counter rebuttal. At that point, we will stop and move on. Uh we're hoping that we don't need to use this mechanism and that it acts effectively as a deterrent. Um but if any issues like that come up, that is the process and procedure that we, that we will follow. So um now on to uh our questions. For this question, we'll go in alphabetical order by last name. We'll start with um Ms. Campbell, then go to Mr. Dalton, and finally finish up um with Mr. Parker.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. Do we get to do our opening statement first and then questions?
Thank you so much.
Okay.
You are correct, you do get to do an opening statement first. We'll go uh in the order that I just described for opening statements. Um to begin when, uh whenever you're ready, Ms. Campbell.
Okay, and then who's the timekeeper again?
Will be, Vinita will be doing the timekeeping.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, thank you so much for inviting me here to share with you. Um why I want to be on the Fremont City Council for District Two. I'm proud of our achievements for the past ten years with the Fremont Unified School District Board of Education. We've worked directly with parents, students, and staff and community leaders. We built new school facilities and expanded student mental health services and safety programs. All while maintaining the status of the top performing, award-winning district in the state. As your city council member, I will build on that momentum and take Fremont's challenges head-on. Especially the housing crisis. I am a strong supporter of building housing as a means of addressing the housing shortage and meeting the city's Rena. Obligations. Taking a position on not supporting houses, housing is an insult to working families. And it jeopardizes the creation of thousands, but not just working families with low income. But for firefighters and teachers and seniors and um children and our grandchildren. As a Fremont City Council member, I will work with the city on creative solutions. Such as incentive programs and the provisions of SB nine, SB nine. To educate Fremont's communities on, on home building. I'm honored to have the support.
Alright, now uh we will hear from Mr. Dalton, ninety seconds for your opening statement.
That, thank you, Annie, uh and thanks to Fremont for everyone for this opportunity. Uh my name's Robert Dalton, I'm running for city council in District Two. I'm a longtime resident of the East Bay, I've been in Niles for about the last twenty years, uh raised a family there. And in that time, I've become a big supporter of everything Fremont. Uh I've been working for the last ten years with my neighbors and community to keep Fremont a welcoming place. Uh to uh preserve its great natural beauty and to move Fremont into the challenges of this particular time. Um my path here began about eight years ago as a community organizer and advocate. Along with my neighbors, I started several groups to marshal comments and challenges to developments and changes that we saw. As environmentally problematic and destructive to our neighborhood and to the city. I'm currently the Chair of the Fremont Planning Commission, where I've served for nearly four years. In that time, I've seen scores of developments.
Thirty seconds.
Development applications, ordinances, and changes to the city's general plan. My goal there has been always to push the city towards a model of transit-oriented development. And a place where affordable housing becomes a common goal in each and every piece of ground that is built upon here in Fremont. Thanks.
Thank you, and finally we'll hear from, uh from Mr. Parker.
Well, thank you, I appreciate this opportunity to come before the community and really introduce myself and talk about. What I've done and hope to do for our community. I've lived in Fremont for almost thirty years, uh the last seventeen of which have been here in Niles and District Two. Uh raising my family here, I've got three kids. All of them ha, are either in or have gone through Niles Elementary, yeah, my two oldest are now in Washington High School. And that's a big part of the reason I'm doing this. I'm doing this for my kids, for my neighbors, for my community. I want to ensure that we have a welcoming and diverse Fremont. That's affordable and accessible for every generation that follows. I really became involved in city politics about three years ago during the navigation center issue. Uh in that period, I saw a lot of things the city was doing. Things that were well-intentioned and things that could have been done better, and I became involved, and I've stayed involved. I've continued to consist, to consistently go to city council meetings to participate. To organize the community when there was an issue that really needed to bring the public's attention to. And really try to drive change in a positive way by working with the community, working with the city council to understand. What our community needs and provide not just specific point solutions, but a comprehensive program. That can really provide full services to everyone in the community, including the homeless community, so that they, they can become housed.
Okay, thank you all for your opening uh statements. Now we'll move on to some, some prepared questions. The first question is, um if a new Housing Navigation Center or Safe Parking Initiative. Or other services for the unhoused were implemented in your neighborhood or your council district. Would you automatically support or oppose such a plan? Why or why not? Have you taken any um official positions in the past on either of these issues? And what steps would you take to ensure its success? Uh this time, we'll go in the order of first, uh Mr. Dalton, then Mr. Parker, and finally we'll finish with Ms. Campbell. So ninety seconds, um Mr. Dalton, whenever you're ready.
Thank you uh for the question. Uh yes, so I've been um organizing and advocating along with Fremont for Everyone. Basically, since its inception as a group uh for the Housing Navigation Center, for the Homeless Navigation Center. Um I firmly believe that we need to uh expand that facility, it's, it's been successful. Uh at least moderately so, uh I think there's a sixty-six percent um. Graduation rate uh to housing. So I, I would think that, yes, if, if a navigation center were to come into my neighborhood, I would definitely support it. The safe parking, same thing, I, I think. Uh in my neighborhood in particular, we have a, a park which has been completely taken over by. Uh vehicular homeless, and uh if that could be uh made legitimate. Uh by city action, I would be all for it, I would support it a hundred percent. Um those people need services.
Thirty seconds.
Uh they need um, you know, a slew of help, they need caseworkers. And I would advocate for a, a safe parking district in, in my backyard. Yes.
Thank you um for keeping it within uh time. Next, we'll hear from uh Mr. Parker, same question.
Alright, great. So the answer is neither yes nor no, the answer is really, it depends. So I'm in favor of what works. So the, obviously, the homeless crisis is out of control in Fremont, we need to do things that are gonna be effective and productive. Simply having activity that's not productive is not a solution. So let me give you a couple of great examples. So the Navigation Center has been successful, as Mr. Dalton said, there's a sixty-six percent rate. Success rate, meaning of the forty-seven people that were through it in the year one. Uh report, thirty-one have become housed and additional five found places in other areas, so very good success rate. Why has it been successful? It's been successful largely because of where it is. The initial location was problematic for a number of reasons. The people in the Housing Navigation Center are required to provide two of their three meals a day. That means they have to go shopping. Well, there's no grocery stores anywhere near that or are easily accessible in that location. There are no medical services, there are no job placement services, there's none of the things that people in that center were gonna need to be successful.
Thirty seconds, sorry.
Now it was moved to a different location where all that stuff exists. That has contributed to the success of the Navigation Center. So context matters. Same with Safe Parking, it was a three-tiered program. And on the night it was adopted, I argued to move directly to tier three, which was gonna be the most impactful one and can really make a difference. Tier one has been much less successful because it doesn't have those extra features, so context matters. Is this a program that's gonna drive solutions?
Alright, and finally on this question, we'll hear from Ms. Campbell.
Um, yes, on the first question, if, if I would like to see the homeless Navigation Center um expanded. I know that we have, uh the reason why we didn't take in as many um families had, as we had originally anticipated. Was due to COVID, and because of COVID, we were not able to bring in as many families. So we, we will need to, to figure out after the pandemic how we might be able to expand that program. Um yes, it, I would support uh Safe Parking, as a matter of fact, I ran a homeless. Um program for five years at, at my church, uh South Bay Community Church. And also, um our church is a safe parking site for homeless. So we, um and we volun, we volunteered to help them, we run programs for them, we bring them food. We, we do um quite a bit of stuff for them, so the, um I am in full support. Thank you.
Alright, thank you for um all of your answers, we're going to move on to the next question. And the order um in which candidates will answer this time uh will be first, uh Mr. Parker, then Ms. Campbell. And finally, we'll finish um with Mr. Dalton. So the next question is, historically Fremont has not met its Rena. For any um members of the audience that may not know, that's Regional Housing Needs Allocation Targets. For below-market-rate affordable housing. Since the term affordable housing seems to mean something different to each person or entity asked. Do you see this shortfall as a problem, uh or do you think that the concern is overinflated? What specific policies would you support uh and advocate for? To meet the shortfall of affordable housing that Fremont has seen time and time again, and its Rena numbers. Um so first, we'll go to Mr. Parker.
Alright, great, thank you. So there's really a bifurcated answer to that. So there's two things that are gonna be necessary to really help people be able to move into affordable housing. That's the quantity of available housing that they can afford and the affordability of that particular housing. So let's look at quantity first. So absolutely, we should be doing more to build high-density affordable housing. In the right locations, and that, that's very key to Fremont. When you look at Fremont, we're a very diverse, spread-out city. You're gonna have a lot of different people with a lot of different opinions, you get people who've lived here for thirty, forty, fifty years, sometime multi-generation. And they're gonna have a certain set of needs that we need to respect, but at the same time, we have to make housing available. To those who necess, can't necessarily afford it, to that next generation, so that they can come back and continue to live and grow here. So having high-density affordable housing in transit-oriented areas. Uh closer to the high-tech jobs, like the new Facebook campus, which is in Ardenwood, and nowhere near any kind of uh.
Thirty seconds.
Transportation. The other thing is affordability. So when you look at affordable housing, the definition of affordable housing in Fremont varies. From the reasonable to the comical. I, I actually heard someone describe a million-dollar home as affordable, which is absurd. So what we need is, we need stratified ve, realms of housing subsidies. So that people who are working, who are doing the right things, are, are, are able to get into housing. They can have the right level of subsidy to help them get into the housing that they can afford.
Alright, uh thank you for your answer. We're going to now move on to Ms. Campbell.
I, I don't get to thank you for coming in time either?
Alright, thank you for coming in time.
Alright, thank you, alright, I feel better now.
You missed my one second.
Well, I, you know, it, thi, thi, this is a very complicated issue, and it, and it, and it definitely. Um is not sort of a, a cookie cutter approach to be able to um answer the, the, the how do we get there? I think one of the things that we have to be cognizant of is that we need both. We need to have um market-rate housing in order for them to pay the in-lu fees. The in-lu fees are the fees that help drive low income. Um and uh very low-income housing and, and, and its development. Then we have to con, probably consider um incentives, because the. Um Fremont has real high fees associated with the building of housing. Whether it's market rate or affordable housing. So we, we could, can, we could consider some types of incentives to encourage developers to develop more. Um and if you look at the numbers, they are, we, we're over to, 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 till twenty thirty-one. Fremont Rena numbers are twelve thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven homes.
Thirty seconds.
Of which, three thousand and ninety-six are low, low-income units. And three thousand six hundred and forty are very low-income housing units. So we have to be strategic on how we are able to work with developers to create these types of homes. Cause we don't build them as a city, we work with um builders to be able to help us do that. So I, I just think we have to be very strategic and we have.
Alright, uh finally, we'll go to Mr. Dalton on this question.
Thank you. Well, you know, traditionally Fremont has been a place where we exceed our Rena numbers. Considerably on the high-end, uh above-market-rate units and, uh and egregiously. Uh forget about the lower end of those numbers. I, I, I'm not worried in the slightest that we will build a lot of expensive homes here in Fremont in the next ten years. That, that is going to happen. The way, the way to make uh affordable units happen is to eliminate. Or alter the zoning in some parts of our city to make affordable housing more attractive to developers. And to give the builders of affordable housing first dibs on some of the pieces of land. That come available from the city or even privately. And the way you do that is you institute one hundred percent affordable zoning overlays within transit districts. To.
Thirty seconds.
Give developers the chance to get their hands on that property and, and give them the easiest route. To build affordable housing and, and dense units in pieces of property that have access to robust transit solutions.
Thank you all for your answers on uh, on that question. We'll go to um another question and we'll return uh to the, to the order that the candidates gave uh their opening statements for. Uh that will be uh first Ms. Campbell, then Mr. Dalton, and finally um Mr. Parker. Um this next question is, do you support more statewide control over building affordable housing as a matter of right? With uh city council approval such as, such as with SB thirty-five? Why or why not? And uh go ahead, Ms. Campbell, when you're ready.
Okay, so um SB thirty-five, um I, I have not, um transparency, I have not read the full. Um uh uh bill. So I'm not as familiar with all of the provisions as probably I should be if I'm talking about a housing thing right now. Um but I am not in favor of statewide control, but I know that they give us the numbers, they give the cities the numbers that they're supposed to have. And so, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of statewide control.
Alright, thank you um for your answer, and thank you for staying within time. Uh now all of you have gotten one. Alright, now, now uh we'll go to uh Mr. Dalton and hear his answer on this question.
Okay, thank you, Annie. So uh, so Fremont in its last Fremont uh Rena allocation exceeded the number by. I think twenty-five or thirty percent. Um we don't, we don't need the state control to build housing in Fremont, quite the opposite. Uh what we need is strong local control of where that housing goes. And what kind of housing it is, because uh you know, given a free rein by. If, if certain legislative uh ideas, we'll get nothing but above-market-rate housing here in Fremont. And, and, and that's the last thing we need. So I, I'm, I, I see every city has its own unique challenges and geography, and in that realm. Every city should be governed by the people who know it best. And those kind of decisions should be made by the people who have boots on the ground in those cities to direct that housing. And direct that.
Thirty seconds.
Places where they know it's gonna do the most good.
Alright, and on this question, uh finally we'll hear from Mr. Parker.
Alright, thank you. So as I understood it, SB thirty-five effectively states that, and I'm paraphrasing here. That as long as a development project fix within established zoning regulations, it's essentially automatically approved. So I have a great issue with that uh for a couple of reasons. First of all, you know, as Mr. Dalton said, what you're gonna get is you're gonna get a lot of very expensive homes built, and they're not gonna be able to. Or not be desirable to provide for that low-income housing, those, that, that more high-density housing that we so desperately need. The other issue goes back to, and I'm gonna agree here, is every city, you need, every city has its own needs. Each community has its own background and history and goals and objectives, and they should have the latitude. To understand what's gonna be built, where it's gonna be built, and also to make sure that there's sufficient supporting infrastructure. It's not just that this, this building, these sets of homes, neat zoning laws. There's other things that have to take into consideration.
Thirty seconds.
Transportation, is there effective water supply, are there police and fire services? Yeah, are, are all the other things that go into building a community in place. And able to support that additional housing, those additional buildings. And that's, that's really why it's so important to allow the community to be able to take a more hands-on role. So that they can have a comprehensive program to make sure that they're building the right houses in the right place for the people that need it the most.
Fine, thank you.
Right on time. Uh, alright, uh we'll move on to the uh next question now. Um this time, the order will be uh Mr. Dalton, uh Mr. Parker, and finally Ms. Campbell. Um this next question is, when um citizens or members of the public speak at city council meetings. Because they're concerned about homeless encampments or uh visible homeless people. How do you plan to um address their concerns?
Well, thank you for that question. Uh you know, that's, that's very interesting. What, wha, what I always tell people is that, you know, fear of the homeless is not a policy direction, first of all. Uh when, wha, when you uh are, are frightened of people. Because you don't understand their circumstances or you can't relate to their circumstances, that's not a way that we direct public policy. Uh we direct public policy as a ma, a matter of creating good for the greatest. Number of people and for all the people in the city that we can. So uh, you know, I don't wanna bring religion into this, but as a Christian, I, I know. I have been trained to care for the poor. And that's part of my philosophy uh in life and in public service. So if we, i, if, if that winds up, you know, being advocating.
Seconds.
Navigation center for a safe place for a homeless person to take a shower. Uh, uh, all I can say is, let's do that. Let's help those people. They need help. You know, don't turn your back on them.
Thank you. Um next, we'll go to Mr. Parker.
So the question was really around how you'd address the people who come to the, come to the city council meetings and have concerns about the homeless. And how I'm gonna address that is I'm gonna listen to them, I'm gonna hear what they have to say. One of the core tenants of my uh platform is really community engagement. I wanna hear what people have to say, I wanna talk to them, I wanna understand where they're coming from, what all the different points of view are. Because I can't help them, I can't allay their fears, I can't represent them properly if I don't talk to them. And that's, that's really what it's all about, is having a conversation, it's talking to people and understanding, okay, what are your concerns? And then I can lay out all the reasons why it might not necessarily be a concern. Or how we're gonna address those concerns, and in even doing that proactively. So if a, a center is gonna be built somewhere, don't go ahead and plan for it and then do the community outreach. Do that first, have those conversations with people, understand that we're putting it here, and here's why we're putting it here, and here are the things we're.
Thirty seconds.
Putting in place to ensure that the community is safe and secure and protected. And allay those fears and those concerns before they become a problem. As, as with so many things, it really comes down to having open, honest, proactive communication. Don't, don't try and sell them on something, be honest with people. Let them know you understand their fears and their concerns, and you're taking that into consideration. And taking steps to go ahead and solve those problems before they become an issue. That's how you deal with it.
Time.
Alright, and finally we'll go to Ms. Campbell.
Um I, I definitely have a lot of experience with people coming down to the school board meeting. Um very upset of over a number of issues. And so, one of the things that I, I know we have to do, people oftentimes just wanna be heard. So listen, listen to their concern and um try to, try to put my, I try to put myself in their position. Of why they feel the way that they feel. And one of the reasons why people feel fearful of um people who are unhoused. Is because lots of them have um medical um uh mental health concerns. And they don't always act like a normal person because of their um mental health status. So what we have to get people to see is that we're working as hard and as diligently as we can. To provide the types of services that some of these um individuals that are unsheltered need. And that we need to be sensitive.
Thirty seconds.
To um their needs. And um certainly, I would agree that it is, as, as a city, it's our responsibility to ensure that people are housed. And that they are, they have the, the mental services and the support that they need to be able to live in Fremont. Thank you.
Alright, um, thank you again. Thank you all candidates for, uh, those answers. Uh, we're going to go to, uh, another. Finally on the screen, screen's not cooperating. There we go. Uh, we'll go to, um, another question now. And the order will be, uh, Mr. Parker, then Ms., uh, Campbell, and, um, finally we'll hear from Mr. Dalton. Um, next question is, housing, whether market rate or deed restricted affordable, uh, is very expensive in Fremont. So can you tell us a bit about, uh, what specific policies you would champion? Whether at the city, regional, or state level that you believe will reduce housing costs. Um, Mr. Parker, you can start.
Alright, well, like, like so much, it really comes down to a function of supply and demand. Right now we have more people than we have houses and that drives the cost up. Uh, so really the only thing we can, the things we can do to alleviate that is increase the supply. So building more high density housing in those transit oriented areas closer to the jobs that people want. So not just necessarily next to the BART station, but build them closer to the tech centers where those jobs are. So it's easier for people to commute there. Uh, you know, i- i- if you look at how long it takes to get from the BART station to the Facebook campus, it's over an hour on the bus. That's not really practical. So you need to have. Housing near jobs so people can get to work. The other thing is you can do things, uh, and this would have to be more of a statewide initiative. Is having, uh, housing subsidies that are somewhat tied to income. So there are some housing subsidies, some things people can get to get into affordable housing, but it's not enough. There's, there's too many people waiting in line. And so there needs to be a stratified tiers of people who are. Doing the right things. They have jobs, they're working, they're, they're, they're doing, they're paying their taxes, they're doing everything they're supposed to do, but they still can't afford housing. Though, help those people based upon income and give them a certain subsidy so that they can get into affordable market rate housing. That's, that's how you really address that particular issue.
Alright, and, uh, now we'll move on to Ms. Campbell.
Excuse me, um, as I mentioned, uh, um, in my opening statement, that some of the ways in which we could. Build more affordable housing or have developers build more, uh, affordable housing is, is with fees. Um, reduce the, 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 the fees that they have to pay. Um, we could, uh, do other types of tax incentives for development. We can do, um. There's this, the parking, for example, um. Uh, in some areas, they're required to have certain amount of parking spaces. You can reduce the number of parking spaces so you can have more room for housing. Those, that's like density bonuses, a flexible design standards. So there are a number of incentive programs out there that we could use to help us build. Um, some affordable housing, uh, in, 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 in Fremont. And, um, I would, would work with the city.
Thirty seconds.
Developers to try to look at some of these incentive programs to see if they would be, um, be. If they would, would work with us to be able to achieve this goal. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And finally we'll go to Mr. Dalton.
Uh, sure, so, um, uh, the, the history of our last arena allocation, the success of our ability to build homes in Fremont. Did not decrease the price of homes in our city in the slightest. Uh, we need to create zoning that will incentivize. Uh, uh, affordable by design units, whether that means they're smaller or more dense. Uh, uh, but units that developers will want to build that are small enough. That people can move in at a lower price, especially near transit. We need to create more transit hubs in Fremont so that we can build, you know, more dense housing around that transit. We can't let, uh, TODs like Centerville go by the wayside. Uh, we need to use SB ten to create zoned areas in Fremont that.
Thirty seconds.
Former redlining that we know existed, for example, in Irvington, where there's a delineation between. Uh, blue collar and white collar housing that, uh, developed in the nineteen sixties. So I think there are definitely things we can do to bring the price down, but it, it does have to do with making less expensive units.
Alright, um, thank you all, uh, for those answers. Before we switch over to the audience, um, submitted questions. We have a one less prepared question and the form will be a little bit different. This is going to be a lightning round, I'm going to run down, um, a list of policies, the same list for every candidate. And you'll say yes or no, whether or not you, um, support these things. I understand. Housing policy is inherently complicated. Um, I'm going to ask if at all possible, please. Yes or no, but if you need like ten-ish seconds to explain. Oh, wow. Alright, so, uh, we're back to the starting order. Uh, first, uh, we'll go, uh, Ms. Campbell. Then Mr. Dalton and finish with, uh, Mr. Parker. To be clear, I'll ask, I'll run down the whole list for one candidate before moving on. To the next candidate for clarity's sake. Um, so yes or no, do you support these policies? First one, streamlined ministerial review for housing that meets all of Fremont's zoning and development standards.
Say, say that second word again?
Streamlined ministerial approval for housing that meets all of Fremont's zoning and development, development standards.
Yes.
Next one, rezoning high resource areas near transit to allow for more missing middle housing.
Yes.
Pre-approved duplex designs to help more Fremont homeowners use SB nine.
Yes.
Good cause eviction and tenant opportunity to purchase for mobile homes.
Yes.
Rent stabilization and eviction protections beyond those established as a baseline in state law.
Yes.
Mixed income residential development on the Fremont BART parking lot.
Say that again, please.
Mixed income residential development on the Fremont BART parking lot.
Um, uh, at neutral.
Alright, um, expands the TOD transit oriented development for any members of the audience that don't know. Overlay radius beyond the pre-existing half mile.
Support.
Inclusionary zoning, i.e. onsite, um, affordable housing.
And, yes.
Alright, and last one, raising the minimum, uh, required affordable housing percentage.
No.
Alright, next we'll go to, um, Mr. Dalton.
And we can, we can cut to the chase. I go yes on all of those.
You, okay, alright. You go yes on all of them. Alright, thank you for being efficient. Uh, next we'll go to, uh, Mr. Parker. Uh, the same list of questions, um, for you. Streamlined ministerial approval for housing that meets all of Fremont zoning and development standards.
Uh, no, because I think the, uh, control of development belongs locally. I, I said it before, I'm saying it again. You know, the, the local areas, every community is best equipped to do their zoning, not. Not the state government.
Alright, uh, um, next one, rezoning high resource areas near transit to allow for more missing middle housing.
Yes, no brainer.
Um, pre-approved duplex designs to help more Fremont homeowners use SB nine.
Yep, absolutely.
Good cause eviction and tenant opportunity to purchase act for mobile homes.
Yes.
Rent stabilization and eviction protections beyond those established as a baseline in state law.
Yes.
Mixed income residential development on the Fremont BART parking lots.
Yes, if it continues to provide sufficient parking for people who don't live next to BART to be able to get there and take advantage of it.
Alright, um, expands the TOD overlay radius beyond the pre-existing half mile.
Uh, it depends. Is it going to three quarters of a mile or thirty miles? So it, it, it depends on what that means. That's too ambiguous.
Alright, um, inclusionary zoning, i.e. onsite affordable housing.
Uh, yes.
Raising the minimum required affordable housing percentage.
Yes.
Alright, and with that, we'll now go to audience questions. I'll say it one more time for any members of the audience. Who may not have been here at the beginning, but who may, uh, be here now. We've already received a few, um, audience submitted questions prior to the start of the forum. So we'll be prioritizing those. So if any members of the audience wish to submit a question. You may do that using the Q and A feature. Um, we ask that any questions that you submit. Be phrased in a way that are addressable to all, uh, three of the candidates here. Be focused on, um, housing or homelessness issues or adjacent enough related issues. It's not the hateful discriminatory bigoted, uh, or violence in, in nature. Um, it is sad that I have to say that, though unfortunately due to previous experience I do. So, uh, for the first, um, audience, uh, sorry, for the first, um, audience submitted, uh, question. Uh, we'll go, uh, Mr. Dalton will answer first, then Mr. Parker, and finally Ms., uh, Campbell. The question is, and I, uh, will just be reading the questions, um, verbatim that were submitted as not to. To, to change the intent of who, whomever submitted it. Um. What plans do you have for installing vehicle charging stations, uh, and the various housing areas? I assume, uh, the submitter means electrical vehicle charging stations, though I can't know for a surgeon. Uh, first we'll go to Mr. Dalton.
Wh- what plans do I have? Well, I, I think we can build that into the development requirements of. Uh, uh, buildings of certain size and density, uh, pretty easily. Um, change by changing the general plan to accommodate that. Uh, I don't. I, I don't think anyone would object to that. I think we can, uh, find a minimum. Uh, number of units that, uh, we can require to have. X number of charging units per, uh, household and it'll happen. Uh, uh, I think this is pretty much very straightforward.
Alright, um, next we'll go to Mr. Parker.
Yeah, absolutely. So anytime there is new development going on, there absolutely needs to be. A sufficient number of charging stations, uh, installed. As we work, move towards twenty thirty-five and the state mandate that all cars will become zero emission. The number of electric vehicles on the road are, is going to skyrocket there. We're, we're gonna see millions, tens of millions of more throughout the state that are going to be, uh, electric vehicles and they're gonna require charging. So we have to build charging stations everywhere we can, but it doesn't end there. Uh, like, like so many things, it's a full spectrum solution. So electricity doesn't come from magic. It comes, it has to be generated. That means we need to put in renewable, uh, sources to power that our power grid can't handle what we're doing today. When we put millions of more cars on the road, it's gonna be that much worse. So we need to have solar panels and other types of renewable energy. Every place we build. So every new home, every new industrial park, every new complex, every retail center. Has to have solar panels on it. So we can provide that electricity that people are gonna need and to do it. In a manner that is ecologically responsible, because climate change is, you know, clearly the greatest challenge of our generation.
Alright, and finally we'll hear from Ms. Campbell.
Um, I, I'm, I'm just gonna really kinda echo what, what has already been said in terms of ensuring that whatever new development comes. There will be charging station, um, ensured that any, um, new development has, um, solar panels. Um, that's actually what we're doing at, at, um, at the, in the school district. We're making sure any new, um, development, any new. Um, schools with the middle school model that we're going to, um, have solar panels. We have a, um, a huge, uh, contract with the solar, uh, to, to, to move Fremont Unified into the, the solar area. And we would, and, and I would also like to be able to do the same for the city. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, um, for those answers. And we'll, uh, move on to another audience submitted question. This time the answering order will, uh, be Mr. Parker will start. Um, then Ms. Campbell and then Mr. Dalton. Um, this next question is Fremont does not require transit demand management plans from all new developments. What are your thoughts in, uh, this area? So we'll, we'll hear from, uh, Mr. Parker first.
Yeah, so anytime there's a, a new development, there has to be a comprehensive plan in place. For how that transit is gonna be addressed. What impact is it gonna have to our roads? How accessible is public transportation? Is it near a transit center? So all of those things have to be taken into account and it, it absolutely has to be part of the review and approval process. We need to make sure that anytime we build new housing, that there's, you know, safe, effective, and accessible transit. That means roadways, that means buses, that means, uh, access to BART if it's within the right distance. That means making sure that people can get where they need to go, because we are in a very broad and diverse. Area geographically and people, people need to get places. And it, and it goes beyond that. It's part of a comprehensive plan. It's making sure that there's enough transit, that there's enough services, that there's enough water. That everything that community is gonna need to be successful is in place before that community is built. Because you have to have a plan to be successful if you're going to achieve your desired results.
Alright, um, thank you. Uh, next, uh. Sorry, my technology. My technology just froze.
I know, can you repeat the question for me one more time?
Yes, I can repeat the question. Um, Fremont does not require transit demands management plans from all new developments. What are your thoughts in this area?
Okay, y- yes, I would agree. Um, I think one of the things that we have seen recently. That has, um, been problematic is the, is the bike lanes and how that has taken up. Lots of space for, for making, um, right-hand turns. So that has, and, 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 and I think that's would be the same kind of thing that would be problematic. If you built a big development and you didn't have any plans for what the roads were gonna look like, what the, what the, uh. How people were gonna get from place to place, um, if they, if they were able, were they on a bus route? What, could they get to the, get to the, um, the BART station? And how are they gonna be able to get along, get around as their grocery stores around? All of the things that a community needs to be able to survive. Um, I think that, uh, any new development should have a plan around how that is gonna happen.
Alright, thank you. And, um, finally on this topic, we'll go to Mr. Dalton.
Thank you. Uh, well, my introduction to, uh, housing policy in the first place was, uh, a development that was being built. Without any consideration for the traffic or the transit needs of that development, uh, here in Niles. Um, and we, we sued, uh, basically on those grounds, on the grounds of traffic and no transit. And, and we won. So I, I am entirely in favor of those kinds of management plans to be included with any development. That being said, there are simply places right now in Fremont where we do not have transit that is, uh, uh, functionally available. And, and so our city needs to work hand in hand with AC Transit. And, and BART if, if, if we can to provide a more, uh, efficient and more robust transit solutions. To larger areas in our city. I mean, uh, uh, I think the, you know, for me, it's like the bicycle lanes.
Thirty seconds.
Essentially going to be a benefit to the city, because once we get enough people driving electric cars. Getting on bicycles, uh, then hopefully along with all that, we'll be bringing in, uh, better transit solutions. Dedicated bus lanes and things like that.
Alright, um, thank you for those, uh, answers. I will point out that we are about ten minutes till, uh, eight. And I do wanna be respectful of all, uh, all, all members involved, both candidate and audiences, um, time. So if you are in the audience and have a burning question, um, submit it now. So hopefully we can, um, get to it. Uh, but the next question, uh, is, uh, what do you think about the current in lieu fee, uh, schedule for housing? Um, you can answer that however you want, uh, whether you, you want to, uh, the, the fees to be higher, lower, stay the same. Um, uh, I mean, any other nuances, uh, you want to add. And, um, this, uh, order will go, uh, Ms. Campbell first, then Mr. Dalton, and, uh, then Mr. Parker.
Um, I, I, as I had mentioned earlier, I am in support of in lieu fees. Because those are the fees that help build the low income affordable housing, um, that we currently, uh, need. And we've been talking about, um, all evening here. So, um, I would support, um, continuing with the in lieu fees that we currently have. Thank you.
Alright, um, next we'll go to, uh, Mr. Dalton. Alright, um, next we'll go to uh Mr. Dalton, uh same question to you.
Thank you, uh, yeah, so my experience is that uh in lieu fees simply don't. Uh, um, meet the economic need that we have. In order to build. Affordable housing, um. The reason that we get that money is because developers. See it pencil out as way cheaper and actually inclusive. Affordable development within the projects that they're, that they're, they're building. So, uh, I, I voted. Uh, on the planning commission to raise those in lieu fees. But, um. You know, it's hard to raise those fees because the higher that they go, and we did make them higher. The more the houses cost, and so I'm for inclusionary development that uh requires. Middle income and uh low-income housing be built with developments of a certain size.
Alright, and finally, we'll go to Mr. Parker.
So when we look at the issue of in lieu fees, so in lieu fees are effectively fees the developer pays to the city. Uh, as a, a reward for building, being allowed to build there. The alternative they have is they could provide a certain percentage of the housing they build to be. Made available as affordable housing, and right now, as it stands today, it's can generally considered. More cost-effective for the developer to pay those in lieu fees. And we do have some of the highest in lieu fees in the Bay Area, but those pa- those costs are just passed on. To the, the people buying it, which makes the homes less affordable, because that drives up the price and puts it. Even further out of the, the hands of the people who, who really need it. So, who, since we already have some of the highest in lieu fees, you know, continuing to raise them isn't. Being productive, what I would like to see is. I- in addition to the in lieu fees or as part of a reduction in in lieu fees, they are still required to provide. A certain percentage of housing available as affordable housing with a clear understanding of what constitutes affordable housing. Uh, again, I, I saw a developer get up in front of city council and with a straight face, he was taking. Twenty percent off of a one point two million dollar house he was gonna make. And make that affordable housing, so it was only a million dollars, very affordable, i- i- it's absurd. So there has to be a clear definition of what constitutes affordable. Because that is a fuzzy word, and if it's not actually affordable to real working people, it's not affordable. And so I would like to see more affordable housing.
Thank you.
Alright, and this is probably going to be uh our last question. Uh, before the closing statements. So I know that we said we were going to uh keep our questions, housing and homelessness. And housing and homelessness adjacent related. Um, but because the issue of uh bike lanes came up and bike lanes are um transit and transportation related. Um. The next question is, um, how do you suggest the um current uh issues? With the bike lanes be addressed such that uh bike lanes um relieve traffic congestion? And that confusion insofar as it's possible is uh prevented. Such that drivers know where to drive and cyclists know uh know where to cycle. Um, for this one, we'll go uh Dalton, then uh Parker and finally we'll follow up with Ms. Campbell.
Okay, well, uh. I personally, I, I mean, I know that people don't like the bike lanes, you can't. If you spend any time at all on social media, you know, there's very loud voices against the bike lanes. Um, I, I think a big part of it is because we, we have not. Uh, yet. Put together a complete. Bicycle, uh, we haven't completed the bicycle plan in such a way uh that you can get in a bike lane. And safely go from one part of the city to another without hitting patches of your journey that are quite dangerous. Uh, I think once the master plan is fully completed. Uh, it's gonna be a lot easier to do that and you'll see significant uh uptick in the number of cyclists uh using. The bike lanes as a transit solution, which is how they should be used, I mean Fremont is a perfect place to ride a bicycle. Um. Uh, I know that uh people don't like to.
Thirty second.
To lose time off of their commute. Uh, as a result of no longer having sliding. Uh, right turn lanes, but you know, the bicycle infrastructure has been built and I do not think the city's gonna pull it out. So, I, I, I think that it's a PR. Issue at this point for most, for the city.
Alright, thank you, next we'll go to Mr. Parker.
Alright, so uh I wanna address this one uh very directly, it's not a PR issue, it's an actual real issue for real people. Um. So I'm gonna briefly give a little bit of uh my perspective, because I have a very unique perspective on this. Uh, when I was growing up, uh, my father owned a bike shop. I, I spent much of my youth in a bike shop and he owned it until. Riding his bike to work one day, he was hit by a car and was severely injured. Fortunately, he survived, but the injuries were extensive, so I have direct personal knowledge of the impact. That a car-on-bicycle accident has. And despite that, as an adult, I actually rode my bike to work. I was one of those very few people who lived in Fremont and rode his bike to work on a daily basis. I commuted ten miles each way to my job in Mopitas, and I did that. And I felt safe, I felt safe the whole way. There were a couple of places, it got a little sketchy, and you know how I dealt with that? I paid more attention. And that kept me safe, and I was able to do that, and the people that wanna ride their bikes, that. Are gonna be able to do that. The people who want recreational riding, they're not driving through central Fremont, they're not driving down Maury. And Paseo Padre where the, the, a lot of these issues are, they're, they're riding somewhere else. And so you need to be able to make driving safe and efficient, need to make cycling. Safe and efficient, walking needs to be safe and efficient, but you don't have to sacrifice efficiency for safety. There, there wasn't a huge number of, of bicycle injuries before, there isn't now statistically among the lowest in the nation.
Time, thank you.
Alright, thank you, and um finally, we'll hear from Ms. Campbell.
Yeah, but there are a lot of people who are very unhappy with the, the, to be, to have. Received the loss of their right turn lane um ability. And they're also saying that they don't see a lot of cyclists on the streets on Fremont, there's not. Um, they, 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 some of the c- community members that I've, I've spoken to said, they rarely see a person. Driving a bicycle, and even if they were gonna drive a bicycle down like Paseo Padre, that's like a superhighway. Nobody wants to ride a bicycle down Paseo Padre because it's not safe. And so, um, just like Mr. Parker said, we have to figure out a way to make driving safe in Fremont. I go down Paseo Padre every day and I see people do, that little curve says you're supposed to go around at thirty-five miles an hour. They're going around at fifty miles an hour, so who would wanna ride a bicycle when you're going around that curve at fifty miles per hour? So I think that, you know, biking is a wonderful thing, it's great for exercise.
Thirty second.
That we need, we need training both for, for um, for uh drivers to, to be aware of bicyclers. And then we need to have a program for um bicyclers to be able to drive, uh, ride their bicycles a lot safer as well. Thank you.
Alright, and uh now after all of the questions both prepared and audience submitted. We'll go to closing statements. Uh, each candidate will get ninety seconds to make a closing statement. And we'll go in the order, uh, first, um, Mr. Parker, then Ms. Campbell and finally, um, Mr. Dalton. Again, ninety seconds for your closing statement, uh, Mr. Parker, whenever you're ready.
Great, and, and thank you again for this opportunity to, to speak to the community, uh, I, I think it's incredibly valuable. And as I said before, I've been consistently going to city council meetings for the last three years. And if there's one particular topic I've talked on in that timeframe, it's been the issue of homelessness. I have long since advocated for a full comprehensive program to deal with homelessness and. To the city's credit, they've, they've started to do that, but there's a lot more to do. What do I mean by a comprehensive program? Well, a lot of the things the city's done, and the city has done some stuff, is, has been reactionary. You know, state funding will become available or something else will become available and they'll find a way to apply it. Whereas what I wanna see is a full comprehensive program. From start to finish that deals with both the different types of people dealing with homelessness, because there's a huge broad differentiation. Among the people in homes that are homeless, the, the person who's working a full-time job but sleeping in his car. Because he doesn't make enough to afford housing, is not having the same set of needs as. The person who's fleeing an abusive relationship or the person who's got mental illness or the person who has. Uh, addiction issues, they all have their own unique needs, and we need to have programs in place to deal with all of them. And it needs to be a full program. You know, the, the navigation center is great, but we started to run into the issue of. People are going into the navigation center and they're there for six months and they come out and they're back in homelessness again. Why? There's no affordable housing, there's no place for them to go. So we need a comprehensive, full-stream program that deals with the needs of all the people, which are highly diverse. And deals with each step of the program, so that they can get the solutions they need, that are gonna help them into long term.
I'm sorry, Keith, I forgot to give you thirty second warning, sorry, my, my bad.
I can keep going.
But I am going to request uh that you not, so we can finish on time. Uh, and that goes for all of the candidates, to be. Um, next we'll hear from uh, from Ms. Campbell, ninety seconds.
Okay, well, again, thank you for this opportunity to be able to speak to you. Um, regarding um affordable housing and homelessness in Fremont. Um, on a personal note, um, I, I have experienced homelessness, my son. Um, was homeless for quite a while, he was um in Washington DC. And it is very problematic for families to have. Um, no contact with their loved ones when they're out on the street. Um, he used to have to, they had, um, he went into um night housing, because it's cold in DC. So he had to stand in line, and sometimes he would get a bed and sometimes he wouldn't. They, um, so it, so it was very, very, um, so I have. My own personal story around um homelessness and how it impacts families. In addition, there was a whole article in yesterday's paper about tiny homes and what that means and why they work and sometimes why they don't work and. Because um of isolation and loneliness issues that members of uh who go into those homes.
Thirty seconds.
Um, experience, so, um, I would, I would say for this, we, we do need caseworkers. We need mental health workers, we need, we need all of the wraparound services that we could possibly give. To, to, to um individuals that go into affordable housing and those types of units. That would, would, would help them, and that's what that strategy was doing. Um, with the, with the tidy home strategies, it was much, much more robust in that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and finally, we'll hear from uh Mr. Dalton, ninety seconds for your closing statement.
Thank you, Annie, and thank you Fremont for everyone, again, for this opportunity. Uh, as I noted earlier, I, I, my experience with city government began with a housing development that. Uh, my neighbors and I felt was unsafe and it, the Superior Court of Alameda proved uh agreed with us. Uh, as a planning commissioner, uh, I've seen firsthand uh the challenges of getting the city to do the right thing. And the challenges of creating a city that can be shared uh by all the residents rather than the most wealthy. Uh, in that capacity, I've acquired an understanding of the city processes. And the knowledge of how city staff uh runs things that's prepared me for city council. Uh, in that capacity, I've also advocated and put forth solutions that have been adopted by the city, I think. Uh, for the betterment of Fremont. Um, I, I've worked with Fremont for everyone to try and advocate for the unhoused. And.
Thirty second.
Continue that work towards making our city a, a, a place where generational families can live close to each other. Uh, where along with all these opportunities we have for great wealth and abundance. Uh, we prove by design our slogan of compassion for everyone in Fremont. So I hope you'll join me in that process, uh, whether I win or not. Thank you very much.
Alright, and thank you again um for, for those answers, those closing statements, as well as all of your answers that you've uh provided us today. Uh, thank you to the audience for tuning in and, and being participatory. And our John Ballot municipal elections. And thank you to all of the candidates for keeping it civil, I'm really glad that we didn't have to timeout uh any thirty seconds for bottles today. And thank you for all participating in uh this forum and caring. About this um large issue around housing and homelessness that is affecting. Uh, our community and the community that all of you are seeking to represent. Um, so with that, uh, again, uh, thank you all for participating in uh, in this forum. And I hope that um all of you, uh, win or lose, keep fighting the good fight for um housing justice. And uh that Fremont for everyone as well, keep successfully advocating um for a more inclusive. And uh better community for all of us.